Mr. Mayor and Council, this next item involves amending Title 15 so as to permit the construction and operation of small privately-owned wind turbines on individual lots here in Spanish Fork. I'm just going to touch on a couple of highlights. We spent quite a bit of time back in June in joint meeting with the Planning Commission, city council reviewing, I think really, the nuts and bolts of a program that would permit, again, that particular land use throughout the community. In fact, I'm going to start with the recommendation that's been made by the Planning Commission to adopt the proposed ordinance. They did recommend that it be adopted with one change. Currently, the ordinance reads, that is, the proposed ordinance reads that the maximum height of a wind turbine would be forty-five feet and simply, as was conveyed to the Planning Commission in their meeting, that anything short of fifty feet would likely not function here in Spanish Fork. They opted to recommend that the proposed ordinance be adopted with a maximum height from the top of the tip of a blade at its highest point to the ground of fifty-five feet. So that's the recommendation that the Planning Commission has made. The staff, in attempting to recommend, excuse me, in attempting to make a recommendation on this item, wasn't able to reach consensus, so we just have that recommendation from the Planning Commission this evening. We've talked about a couple of different approaches relative to regulating wind turbines in the community. That is, if the council thinks it's a use, excuse me, a use that should be permitted in Spanish Fork, originally with an ordinance that was prepared back in January that was presented to the Planning Commission at that time. We were looking at primarily regulating wind turbines based on lot size. And at that time, we, in a proposal that was made, simply said that anything, thing being any property, any property of one acre or larger would be eligible to have a wind turbine. Obviously, there aren't a lot of one-acre lots in the community here, so that was one of the things that's been changed. And rather than to rely on lot size now as the primary basis for regulating where it is and is not appropriate to construct a wind turbine, setbacks now are the primary, I guess, standard that's used in what's proposed. Thirty feet is the standard setback that you'll see from property lines as proposed this evening in this draft. And if you can just think for a minute about maybe some of your own properties and your own backyards and whether or not you could physically site a wind turbine on your property and still keep it thirty feet from your property lines in each direction. Frankly, that standard alone does preclude a number of properties throughout the community, but at the same time, it makes it possible for a number of properties throughout the community. So should this ordinance be passed this evening in its current form, particularly with a fifty-five-foot maximum height limit, I do believe that over time you probably would see wind turbines. Frankly, I don't think we'd see a lot of them, but I think you likely would see them throughout the community. There's no tie to a particular zone with the draft that's written, so they'd be permitted in all zones provided that, again, the setback requirements can be met. And with that said, again, the Planning Commission's made the recommendation that it be approved with that one change on the maximum height.
Let's open it up for a public hearing. Anybody like to comment?
My name is Steve Painter. I'm the owner of West Mountain Wind and Solar. I've been working with you throughout this process. The last meeting where we went through and changed, like Dave said, the setbacks, I have no problem with that. My only concern is, and I wasn't real clear when we went through, I was actually kind of confused and they tried to clear it up a little bit, but when they went through and tried to describe, the setbacks were fine, but they were talking about the minimum height from the blades to items. I mean, basically, most cities say that the blades have to be twenty feet from the bottom to the ground. And the way I kind of understood it last time was that any structure, that they had to be twenty feet away from the structure. And the only problem I have with that is if you have somebody that has a two-story house and they're trying to get the height to get over the house, you may only end up with, say, twelve feet to fifteen feet from the roof of the house to the bottom of the blades. And I would kind of like to see that go back to the twenty feet from the ground because most people don't spend time up on their roof, where I don't see that's a real safety issue. I mean, I understand having a certain distance from the blades to the ground where everybody spends their time, but I think if they leave it the way they had it written, and maybe they've clarified that, I don't know, but I can see how that would be a way for them to eliminate a lot of people from being able to do this that otherwise could and still do it in a safe manner. That was my only concern. Other than that, I didn't see any issues with anything else.
You're saying twenty feet from the blade at its bottom point to the ground?
Most of the cities have a ground to the bottom of the blade ordinance or provision their ordinance, say, twenty feet. And obviously, that's for safety issues. But the way I understood it last time when we were in the meeting, when the planning zoning went through, that it had to be more than twenty feet above your roof. Well, first of all, you don't spend time on your roof, and at that time, it was the forty-five-foot height, and that's what, we made objection to that, to go to the fifty-five-foot just for a couple of reasons. Number one, the manufacturer manufactures poles at a certain height. We don't have any choice on what in between. So you either go with a thirty-four or a forty-five-foot pole, which the forty-five-foot height would have eliminated anybody from doing that pole. And that's why they voted to go to the fifty-five-foot height, which would allow people to do the forty-five-foot. But if you have a two-story house and you want to keep it thirty feet from your property line, which I don't have a problem with, you may only be fifteen feet from your roof line to the bottom of the blades. And if, the way the ordinance, I understood it last time, would eliminate you from doing that, which I would like to see that changed.
Let me read that to you, then we can maybe clarify. The closest point of the blade sweep shall be at least twenty feet from the ground, an accessory building, fence or wall. Doesn't say anything about a house.
Okay, so like a tough shed or something, that's no problem. Because I have a few people that have applied for the state rebate program that have two-story houses that want to put these in, and they can if it's twenty feet from the ground or a tough shed or something like that, but if it's their two-story house, then they might only be fifteen feet.
So I understand and interpret that correctly, right? Okay.
Yeah, that was my only concern. Thank you.
Any other comments, public comment? I'd entertain a motion to move out of public hearing.
It'll move.
We have a motion by Councilman Dart, a second by Councilman Nielsen, that we move out of public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any questions, discussions?
I've got one. In the DRC, it didn't come out of there with, because there was not a second. And Mr. Baker moved to send it to the Planning Commission without a recommendation due to the issues related to aesthetics and safety. I understand the aesthetics part. What are the safety issues that there was discussed in the DRC?
Since you're looking right at me and I made that motion, I'll respond. The discussion that took place was initially, we had a draft that talked about a setback from a neighboring residence of one-hundred-and-ten percent of the height of the tower plus the blade. And the discussion changed from neighboring residence to neighboring structure. And the thought was if you would happen to have a freak accident and one of these topple, you know, it's one thing if it falls on your own house, it's something entirely different if it falls on your neighbor's house. And that seemed to be workable until you start talking about the concept of, well, what if the neighboring lot has no structure on it? It's just a vacant lot. Are we going to put a tower up almost anywhere because there's nothing on the neighboring lot and then make that neighboring lot unbuildable? So as a practical matter, the engineering anymore is such, these are not likely to have that type of an accident, but I think when you're drafting ordinance, you want to anticipate the worst-case scenario. And so that was it. And in lieu of doing that, we came with a thirty-foot setback. And then realizing that the neighboring property is going to have setbacks to build anything, that seemed to be a reasonable way to make it work. Now, that, in most cases, is going to protect a neighboring residence. You may still have situations where if you had a worst-case scenario, it may land on a neighboring shed, a neighboring garage. But at least the idea was, in a worst-case scenario, we would protect life in any event.
Are there any electrical safety issues?
That's all covered in our net metering ordinance that we adopted about a month ago. They're very complex, they're very detailed, and that is geared to protect our workers who are working on the lines, other residents in the city, as well as the applicant themselves. But that's not covered.
Is that equipment pretty fail-safe, junior?
I think with the standards that we've put in it, we've looked at it, Provost's looked at it, we borrowed a lot of what they did. A lot of cities are borrowing from the two of us what we've done. It appears to be a pretty good standard. It happens elsewhere, it happens elsewhere in the state. I'm not aware of any problems that any of them have had. The timing, if there happens to be a malfunction within less than a second, these things have to shut down and keep power from coming back onto the grid. It's an incredibly short period of time, and apparently, the technology's there to make that happen.
Kelly, did you have any concerns with it?
Kelly and Guy went over this with me. Guy is the technical expert in our department that understands this, and the two of them went over it with a fine-tooth comb, and they came, we met, the three of us, and went through that, put our net metering ordinance together. And again, that was passed about a month ago.
Okay, I have another question for whoever can answer it. It says, "The base of the tower must be setback from all property lines, minimum distance of thirty feet, and from overhead utility lines, a distance equal to one-hundred-and-ten percent of the height of the tower plus the highest part of any blade." So you have, just for easy figuring, you've got fifty-five feet is what you're proposing here. So you have five-and-a-half feet of clearance between the tip of the blade and a power line. Is that sufficient?
It's one-hundred and ten percent.
Yeah, so you've got a hundred percent of the height plus ten percent, right? So you've got five-and-a-half feet above the tip of the blade.
Well, but you don't have that, you don't have that as it's operating. That doesn't meet the electrical safety standards, which would require somewhere around seventeen feet. What it does do in the event one of these fell over, it leaves you five-and-a-half-foot clearance as it falls from taking down a power line. That is pretty crucial.
Okay, so if there's power lines going over, like in the center of some of our blocks, we've got power lines going through those blocks. If they put a...
Then it'd be sixty-and-a-half feet away from the nearest edge of where a power line were to be on a perpendicular line. Then if it fell, you've got still five-and-a-half feet clearance.
Okay, but what if you had one right over the top of? Can't do it.
Can't do that.
Okay. Does it say that?
Well, the setback is from the edge of the power line to wherever your tower is.
Okay, all right. Got it?
Mayor, you're asking all my questions.
Well, jump in there, buddy.
Don't, do it. Keep asking.
Can I raise one more question?
Um...
Oh, let's see, we're out of, we're out of public.
We're out of public.
But I do want to ask you one question. On the structure, if it goes up another ten feet, how's that going to change the structural base on that?
It's engineered for that.
Does it need to be a bigger base, though? And does that...
Our base is on a forty-five-foot tower, thirty-inch diameter, like, you know, twelve feet from the ground.
I wonder if you have water problems on situations like that, that the tables only, like on a lot of our lots where our low density and that's where this will meet, you have a water table that we have a problem sometimes on.
We have an option of the called half-base, which is eight foot square, four feet deep, that we use in sand situations, things like that, high-water table.
Any other comments? Can I ask questions, gentlemen?
Yeah, I'm, I've still got some, I'm not real excited about windmills in the middle of town. And not, you know, I understand we're trying to address all the safety issues here, but the aesthetics, I don't know if I would like to see one sitting in my neighbor's yard next to me, just for the fact that, you know, forty-five-foot pole with the windmill there on it, I can see this happening outside of town on a big lot, one-acre lots, or, you know, when they're far. But looking down here close to where, especially the area where I live, of course, I doubt if they'd be able to put one in where I'm at with the setbacks and with the power poles or power lines and that, but there are some lots that could possibly happen. But I'm just concerned that, you know, we're going to get a lot of backlash from a lot of public with the aesthetics of this, having these big forty-five-foot power poles or with, not power poles, but windmills. So I'm not real excited about doing anything on this till I, I still, I've looked at them, I've gone and looked at some of these out West Mountain, and, you know, they look good out there. But in the middle of town, I really don't, I don't see it. I just can't see it, all a bunch of these popping up through the middle of the city. Just my personal feeling about it.
Sort of feel the same way Councilman Laufson does. I talked to a few people in the different neighborhoods, and they really feel hard about having something that comes up fifty-five feet in a neighborhood and starts to distract from their neighborhood and making it look a little different. They want nice, even roof lines, and they want the statistics of the buildings looking a lot better. And I just feel that it's not something, something that I think Spanish Fork should have. I talked to a few people about how much power they'd probably save in their household. I don't, the way I'm understanding and reading, it's not saving that much, you're not getting much back into the grid. Windmill, wind power's just not an efficient type of way to generate power. I remember back in the early eighties when we had an energy problem and everybody was, you know, a lot of people were trying to solar panels, and that lasted for about six months, and then we had, they were all taking them off their roofs and that because of the looks that were happening around the city. So I'm really, I'm sort of against this, too, for having them in our town.
I just, I have one question and a couple of comments. Now, the way it's written does not preclude rooftop, rooftop turbines, is that correct?
It does.
It does.
Nine?
Okay. So that does preclude it?
It does.
And the reason for that, or, because I know, if you look at technology the way it's going right now, it'll get to where at Costco and Sam's Club, you'll be able to find rooftop turbines without, you know, a Honeywell or a GE or whatever you have. And it would meet, I would think it would meet the same setback requirements. If you have it in the middle of the gable of your roof, it would be thirty feet away from the fence line, seventeen feet away from the nearest power line. Should it fall, it would roll down and maybe land on the truck in the driveway or, you know, something to that extent. So I guess, that's my question, is why, why are they precluded?
The best answer that I can give is that we're with what's proposed, trying to take as small a steps as we need to, to accommodate what's been proposed. So far, the only thing that we've discussed with Mr. Painter and some of his prospective clients here in town have been the freestanding monopole turbines, but frankly, we've talked about that in the DRC meeting and the possibility that some future, at some future date or time, somebody would make a request to have us consider that, and that's the approach that we've taken.
Okay. So really, it would be, they would go look, see one at Costco, decide they want one, and then say, oh, well, Spanish Fork doesn't allow that, would you please look at it and change that for me so I can go buy one?
The biggest problem I have with that is, they just described to us what the base of these things are. They go twelve feet in the ground and of concrete. There's no way in the world that a roof is going to have the structural integrity of twelve feet of concrete in the ground.
Well, true, but at least the research and the things that have been done so far, the rooftop turbines are in scale, you know, maybe a tenth, a quarter the size of the ones that require twelve feet in the ground. You're not going to have on top of your roof a fifty-five-foot pole and then the turbine up on top of it. I mean, it just, it's not designed that way. The roof certainly isn't designed that way. The ones that are currently working, you know, certainly do meet the requirements that we have in the ordinance as it's proposed, except the fact that you just can't do it. But at least that's my question, I can understand that. Personally, I'd like to see it in there so that we don't have another meeting in the future to then revisit it and say, well, okay, let's take a look at it. You know, let's go ahead and think forward now and say, all right, the technology will get there, or is there actually, and will improve, you know, to add that. I, you know, so you've answered my question. Thank you. My comments, just in general, I think it just stands to the, you know, the technological age, or I guess the advances that we have. If you look back in World War II, Denmark had a lot of problems with power. They, in fact, all of their power, they had received from oil and stuff from other countries, Germany and things, and they were in dire straits as a result of World War II because of all their, all their power coming from external sources. Denmark actually turned towards wind generation, and they actually now are one of the top, if not the top, power-producing and power-exporting countries in the Western, or in the European Union, based on their wind generation. Wind generation's very viable. Personally, for my own, my budget, I can't afford to do it. I don't see the returns that would be big for my household. One question and concern I have is, I understand people's concern about aesthetics. At the same time, we need to ensure the property rights of the private property owner that wants to put it on there. At what point do we draw the line and say, well, the neighbors don't want the windmill because they don't like how it looks? Well, they don't want my fifth wheel in the driveway because they don't like how it looks. Well, they don't like the particular color of my house because it doesn't match with the rest, even though we're not in a homeowners' association. So I understand what people are saying about aesthetics, but I disagree personally because at some point, someone's not going to like what's going on in the neighbor's yard on the flowers they planted or X number of things. And it, you know, exactly where do we draw the line and say, well, it's all good and well in someone else's yard, someone else's town, but not mine because I just don't like how they look? You know, we have an opportunity to allow citizens to have a means whereby they save monies. If they save five dollars a month because of the money they net metered back into the system, you know, there are some months where five bucks is a huge deal in saving, you know, saving money. And if that's what they feel is important to them, then I think that's what they need. But I don't, you know, I'd like to see it pass, and I'd actually like us to, you know, to think out even further on the possibilities that may come, just to afford, you know, those that have the means or want to do it, an opportunity to save that money. I just don't think we should balk on it just because we don't like how it looks.
My main concerns were the safety, which I think have been addressed tonight. So when it comes to aesthetics, I feel a little bit like Kier does. I, you know, a person could build a structure or plant a tree that, you know, grows to a good height. That's hard, that's a hard question to deal with because you just, you know, you really can't, you can't please all your neighbors all the time, I guess. So I would, you know, tend to support doing this. I think it's fine to address only a limited, I don't know that we have to go to the satellite dish type on the top of the roof, the smaller ones right now. If it hasn't been proposed or requested, I guess that's why we're going just, that's right, Dave, just, we're just dealing with the ones that have, that appear to be most requested or most interested in right now. If we did everything all upfront, we wouldn't have anything to do later, so we've got to save ourselves some work for later.
Hey, Dave, come on up here. Let me ask you something. What would be the best way to talk to the people of Spanish Fork to find out what their feelings are on a windmill? The best way to reach everybody in the households, to let them, to let them tell us how they feel about having windmills in their neighborhood?
Plant one in every corner and then see what the result is.
Their feelings, so, so, because Kier brings up a point that, you know, it's your, it's your house, you can do anything you want in your lot. Well, I disagree. You know, I think people move into certain areas, and they move in there because of the way the neighborhood is, the way it looks, that there's not accessory apartments, that there's not this, and there's not that, and they don't want that stuff in there. So my concern is, is this a new thing for Spanish Fork? And it might be a good thing, might be a bad thing. I don't like the looks of them.
You could paint them like a flower.
You know, there's been two or three, like over in Provo, there's a couple of cell towers that people just went crazy when they built them. There's one here in Spanish Fork, and the neighbors went berserk on it. Okay, so my concern is, I don't have all of Spanish Fork sitting here. So how do we get Spanish Fork to tell us what their feelings are on what they want in their neighborhood?
That's a wonderful question, I think, particularly on an issue like this that really is subjective. Some people, I think, would look at these and find them, you know, very benign, maybe even fitting component in a neighborhood, whereas other people, I'm sure, will think they're ugly and intrusive and have no place in the community. We've struggled as we've asked ourselves the same question, particularly on this issue where it is so unique, it's such a unique kind of facility. And I'll offer this, even though I don't necessarily believe this really is, is a terribly realistic way to go about it, but the Planning Commission, I believe, suggested that we perhaps allow maybe a dummy tower and turbine to be erected someplace just as fodder for public comment. I honestly think, based on how successful we typically aren't when we reach out in the community and try to get input, that it's going to take something like that, that's somewhat in your face, to elicit some kind of reaction from much of our populace here. That's the only thing that we've, we've thought of, is trying to do something like that, and we could...
Could we put something out in our utility bill?
Absolutely could.
And say, there's a proposal of putting a fifty-five-foot wind tower in neighbors?
Right.
Or you favor or oppose, and send it back to us, or even do it online?
Right.
Seems like we could reach people that way. Just get the input. My feeling, you know, my feeling is here is, this is a huge thing, and this is an, this is an intrusive thing that's going into people's neighborhood, and I don't just want to sit here and pass something just because someone has a right to do it or not to do it without, you know, being a good neighbor and getting the input from people. I just, I think this is, goes a little beyond putting my fifth wheel in the driveway and what color of flowers I have. I mean, this is a fifty-five... have. I mean, this is a fifty-five foot windmill sticking in your yard, and so I think it's a big deal that we need to take our time with, and we really need to get, so we can make an intelligent discussion and issue on this, you know. And I don't think there's going to be that many people that are going to do it, but I'll tell you, when Wayne and I first came in, our first council meeting, and it was talking about those windmills up here, and we had this place packed of people saying, we don't like it where it is, and that's one reason they got moved, you know, because we listened to what the citizens said. And so I think it's important that we, we find out what everybody, at least as much as we can, figure out what's going on.
I think those are two great suggestions. That's, that's a fairly unscientific method of polling the community, but I'm sure that would get some response, and others might have other ideas as to how to go about. We fortunately have the presser tonight, they might be able to help.
No, I, the challenge, the challenge I...
Lana, would you like to put something in there for us?
Sure.
Thank you. Would it be right along with the football columns?
So if we maybe table this for a couple of months, I'll do fairness to you, Mr. Painter?
Well, the concern, the state has issued vouchers to several of your people that want to do this, and part of the voucher system was to stimulate the economy, and if you table this for a couple of months, I think these people are going to lose their budget.
Well, we either table it for a couple of months, or I'm going to vote against it, you know?
Well, I've been, I've been working on this for two years.
Yeah, so two months isn't going to hurt that much, is it? I, so I'm just suggesting that we continue this for, in a couple of months, and do some research on it, on what the citizens want in their neighborhood.
I, I don't know that it would take a couple of months to do that. I, you know, we put it out in the newsletter or in the press or something. I, you know, who's to say that everyone that responds to it doesn't say, sure, you bet. Now, they may be the minority, they may be the majority, but it, you know, I, I don't know. I, there are citizens that want to do it. There's a limited time for government rebates. It's their property. No, it's not a, it's not the same thing as a trailer or flowers, but, you know, my question is, where do we draw that line, though? Because we're already there. We have citizens that are already saying, I don't like how there is a fifth wheel and a boat in the driveway of my neighbor's house. I don't like how it looks like a parking lot because they have what's legal by ordinance, two vehicles and a fifth wheel and a boat.
Yeah, but this is a little different, though. I mean, you're looking at a big windmill, fifty-five foot, and, you know, and I'm, I feel for those guys that have the, the rebates already for them, but that's a couple of citizens, you know, and my feeling is, you know, I'm not ready to rush into this. If, if we want to take a vote on it now, I'll go and vote for it right now, because my vote will be no. And that's, you know, so I'm just, based on my feeling, what I think about the citizen...
Right, based on your, your idea of aesthetics.
That's right, and based on what I, that stuff I had with other people and what I've heard from that.
Oh, sure. No, I, no, I understand.
And that's where I am. So what I'm saying is, if we want to take some time and figure out what the citizens want to say about it, then I'm willing to listen to them. But right now, my vote is no.
Okay.
There's, there's, and here again, I'm just going to point out an observation. I probably would be in favor of us tabling this for a period of time, too, because I think there's one segment of professionals that I would like to consult with, and that are people who do appraisals. Because I'd like to try and understand exactly what the effect on neighboring properties are. Well, you may, but I want to check it out through the, through some of the professionals that do it, that are doing this all the time. So those kind, those kind of questions, I think, need to be raised and answered because if, if it, if it affects neighboring properties negatively, then yes, there is a concern. If it affects them positively, then anyway. So, you know, I would like one of you gentlemen to articulate a motion.
Well, Kier, so how long do you think we should continue this?
I think a month would be fine. I think that, that affords us the opportunity to find out what, what the citizens want through the media and things that we have available.
Let's ask a...
Would that fit?
Tight enough time, a month?
To get it into papers?
Lana, is that enough time, one month, or do you think you need more time to get a response back on something like this?
How do you want the response back?
We want you to bring us the for, all for and all against. If you could bring that to the...
Do you want like a ballot?
I don't know. A survey, like a survey type of thing.
I don't know, ask Seth. He's the King Kong of a... Is it a beauty contest or what?
We've done a few of these in the past, and we did something similar to this with the North Park, as we solicited feedback for the North Park work that we did, as well as for recycling, as we invited people to sign up for recycling. And through the newsletter, which is somewhat effective, but certainly not completely, completely effective, we'll get probably two to three hundred responses, based on previous experience in a month's time. If we do something through the newspaper, in conjunction with that, we might get a few more. You know, we can go, we can ask them to reply online, where we can create a simple form, if you'd like, that they can fill out and, and ask a couple of different questions, as well as some personal identifiers, so that we know that Richard Davis isn't filling it out seven times, and Kier Scobes is filling it out eight times, and whatever.
So the longer it goes, do we get more response, or does it die down?
It, it most certainly dies down. With the newsletter, with the...
Put one in, put one here across the library, put five or six over there, and then get comments. If that's, if you know, if you're on, get some reactions.
Seth touched on an important, I mean, if you can do a survey, you've got to do a survey that has some validity to it.
Yeah, a scientific survey would be the way to do it.
Sure.
The key validity is you people talking to your citizens. I mean, that's where the feedback should be coming from. As the citizens listen to tonight's meeting, as you visit with them, you need to get the feedback from the citizens. It doesn't, to me, that's probably more important than just checking a box.
I agree, so, but I think, so Lana, I think...
We can do all of these other things, surveys, but you have to have it controlled so one person doesn't put in forty-two votes for or against the concept.
So as, so as we're all walking around during the harvest moon hurrah, we want the, we'd like the citizens to come up to the council and tell them what their feelings are.
So I think if we put it in our newsletter, and if it gets, comes into the press, and then we start talking to the citizens, we should be able to fill this back by, within a month.
That's it, yeah. That's what we had today.
Literally, that is today, and so...
That was posted.
It was posted, just like a pub, yeah, absolutely. Right, so I mean, that's, it's not, that's not the resource probably for that. The newsletter just went out, and so you won't have another newsletter in anybody's mailbox until roughly September twenty-ninth-ish, September twenty-eighth, two thirty, somewhere in there. So if you want to do that through the newsletter, you know, there are other tools that we have that are, that are somewhat effective. But really, I think, as Mr. Euler pointed out, you talking with people in many different angles as you can put yourself into to visit with them, is probably going to be just as effective in gathering an opinion. If you want to go the Dan Jones route, we can hire Dan Jones to do a survey. I do not recommend that we start surveying the public.
We can set up a booth on Main Street. These guys can sit out there and take shifts.
So, I mean, I don't, there may not be any point in doing this if, I'm gathering that Richard and Steve are saying they're not going to vote for this unless overwhelming support from the public, and if that's the case, you may not even want to do the, I haven't heard where Rod stands, because I think I would vote for it tonight, but...
I still haven't heard a motion. We'll find out real quick if somebody's brave enough to make a motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, what is this thing called here? Did I say it the right way? I make a motion that we approve the proposed zoning text amendment that would permit the construction of privately owned wind turbines throughout the city.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Nielsen, and a second by Councilman Scobes, that we approve the ordinance number seventeen dash ten.
Okay, I need to ask a question as I do that. So the poles are manufactured at a certain height, certain length. So the fifty-five? So you're saying we shouldn't do fifty-five, because that's not...
Fifty-five is to the top of the blade. You have six feet of blade that you're not even really going to see.
So fifty-five fits the...
That's, that's to the very high point. If the blade was pointed straight up, there's going to be times when they're off on an angle, so it won't be...
Okay, so to the fifty-five foot height requirement, is that okay? Do I need to read, say it?
Just reference it by ordinance number.
Regarding ordinance number seventeen dash ten?
Yeah. And you, you amended it, though. As part of your motion, you need to amend it to the fifty-five foot height.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just do it again. So I'm moving that we approve the proposed zoning text amendment that would permit construction of privately owned wind turbines with the condition that they be a minimum height of fifty-five feet, a maximum height of fifty-five feet, sorry. And this is ordinance number seventeen dash ten. Is that all right?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Nielsen, a second by Councilman Scobes, that we approve ordinance number seventeen dash ten, an ordinance establishing zoning criteria for small wind towers, with an amendment that we have a maximum height of fifty-five feet. All in favor, say aye. No, wait a minute. No, 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 I'm going to go roll call. Mr. Scobes?
Aye.
Mr. Dart?
Aye.
Mr. Laufson?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Okay, the motion was defeated by a vote of three to two.
Good, nothing wrong with a little more. I just wanted to make sure we got past it.